Okay, seven o'clock. I'll call this common council meeting for the month of September to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk, roll please.
Brown.
Here.
Evans here.
Booty.
Here.
Grattan here.
Schuster.
Here.
Mayor Wiger.
Here.
First item, business is the agenda approval. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Motion by Brown. Second by Grattan. Any further discussion, questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Previous minutes of, approved minutes of previous meetings. Motion by Schuster.
Second.
Second by Booty. Any further discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Approved minutes of intervening meetings. It's a motion that I have a fact.
So moved.
Motion by Brown.
Second.
Second by Evans. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Public appearances and citizens comments? Let the record show there were none. Communications, do you have any, Sean?
Uh, do nots.
Okay, I have none as well. Approved payment of bills, checks for $683,391.61. Vouchers for $423,649.68. Electronic transfers for $508,503.77. Is there a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Brown and second by Grattan. Roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Payment of bills have been approved. Resolution, reports of officials, resolution 41, 2021. Approved mayor oil appointments, covenant committee, library board, cable TV, CDA, utility commission, utility personnel and plan commission. Ford personnel member are not appointed by the mayor. They are appointed at the utility commission by the utility president. So at this time, the only two that haven't been approached for renewal would be Mr. Pickard. Otherwise, all the rest of them are in agreement. Cheryl, you want to read the resolution from David?
Sure. Resolution 41, 2021. Approved mayoral appointments, covenant committee, library board, cable TV, community development authority, utility commission, utility personnel and plan commission. Whereas the mayor who has diligently searched for individuals, wants to give them themselves by serving on the covenant committee. Whereas the mayor wishes to make the following appointments. William Pickard, covenant committee, serving till nine, 2023. Willie Grattan, library board, serving till nine, 2023. Bob Sweeney, cable TV, till nine, 2023. You said William Pickard is not, has not been.
And that would be Stan Smith for CDA.
Right, but I need to leave William Pickard off of here if he is not.
Right.
Okay.
He has not been on.
Stan Smith, CDA, serving till nine of 2025. Ross Caniff, utility commission, ten of 2024. Ross Caniff, utility personnel, till ten of 2024. Ross Caniff, for plan commission, till ten of 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this fourteenth day of September, 2021. With the passage of resolution 41, 2021, the draft of William Pickard. Do you also have to drop the utility personnel?
Right, utility personnel and plan commission for Ross Caniff. That's appointed by the, by the utility president at their organizational meeting. So those two would be omitted and William Pickard until he gets back to mayor. Other than that.
And Neil Whiting, right?
Neil Whiting is, is approved. It's kind of a word mash game there. So I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Evans. Motion by Brown, second by Evans. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution 41, 2021 has passed. Resolution 42, 21, accept resignation of Alderman Paul Shanks. Whereas the common council has received a letter of resignation from Paul Shanks, Ward 1 Alderman. Whereas the common council recommends accepting the letter of resignation effective August 20th, 2021. See exhibit eight. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council, city of Juneau, accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council, city of Juneau, this fourteenth day of September.
With the passage of resolution 42, 21.
Sorry. Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? As you all know, Paul has moved out of the area. I think he did an outstanding job in the short time that he was here. He really picked up on it, was really eager to get involved with the, with the council and he did a good job. So I will accept his resignation with regrets. So at this time, roll call, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Resolution 42, 2021 has passed. Didn't have anything else to report on at this time. The street project, as you see, that was coordinated with, with the blacktop, you know, the legal services facility has been completed. Road is open. Took care of a lot of curb and gutter replacement along with that project as well. Other than that, we're waiting for the North people, North Depot, North Mill and East Moore Street project to be resurfaced. Those are the two major resurfacing jobs we have on the agenda for this year. Any questions? Moving on, clerk treasure.
Our deputy clerk Veronica Estelle has put in her two weeks. Her last day will be September 21st, which is this upcoming Tuesday. She has decided to move down to, or over to South Dakota where her daughter has recently moved. So she will be missed. It has been posted internally for the five days and it should go public tomorrow. Also, we have received census data now, so it's time for redistricting if need be. So redistricting is a process by which electoral district boundaries are redrawn periodically to adjust for shifts in population and to ensure proper representation for all potential voters in a given geographic area. Redistricting is completed in three phases. Phase one, which we are currently in, the county board is required to adopt a preliminary county supervisory district plan. This will be completed on September 21st with a public hearing on the tentative plan at the county board meeting at 5:30 PM. Aldermen are encouraged to attend and express their opinions and concerns. After the public hearing, the board will adopt the tentative plan. Currently, what they have, just currently sent out to us, there is no change in our supervisor. Still number 24. Nothing's been added, nothing's been subtracted, so. That's good news in regards to that. So after they pass this plan, this temporary plan, they will distribute the plan to the municipalities by September 24th. With COVID and census data coming out later than usual, there's pretty good time crunch in regards to getting everything back to the county, what the city has to do. So once we receive this plan, we basically have a month to come up, redistrict ours if we need to be. So phase two of the city is to adjust ward boundaries if need be. This is governed by section 5.15 of the Wisconsin statutes which states intended, this is intended to be as permanent as possible. It's not subject to equal, equal population requirements. This is required from municipalities with a population of at least 1,000 people. Our population did come back in the census with 2,658. So I believe that's down a little bit in regards to what we have on our sides.
47%. Kind of led the two counties, Jim Jefferson, as far as declining population in our communities. I've been asked by several residents, is our census accurate with the, I know they take into account Clearview residents and if anybody's staying more than a year at the justice facility, that they are classified as a resident? So that can warp our numbers dramatically. So. Yeah. I didn't like to read that because everybody else that might have declined, they were only down by maybe half a percent, percent, percent and a half at the very most, but we supposedly lost 260 some citizens in our community.
Our tenure period, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, tenure period, right. Didn't happen just last year. I just wondered how that, that shook out with the, with the two facilities that we have here in town.
I haven't looked at the 2010 map in regards to what kind of census strength was in regards to Clearview and the jail, but I can definitely look into that and see if that's.
That'd be interesting to see. Is it what it is?
I wonder with the justice facility, if it makes a difference with them housing more federal prisoners or compared to.
Like I said, at one time I was told that you had to be serving, or had to be there a year before you were classified a citizen.
So that probably doesn't matter.
Yeah, I don't think most of them are in and out.
Generally, if they get more than a year, they go to prison, they don't stay in jail.
But a lot of that's probably humor though, is what I think.
Humor and a lot of electronic monitoring.
Oh, is it?
You know, that's taken off in the last 10 years.
That could be a big thing right there too.
Right.
So as part of the section 5150, Wisconsin statutes, it also allows rules for creating wards. Wards must be comprised of whole census blocks, subject to exceptions. Be compact and observe the community of interest of existing neighborhoods and other settlements. Be contiguous and also comply with the population ranges specified by law. For a city of Juneau with a population above 1,000, the wards need to be between 300 and 1,000 individuals. So if you look at that first map that was on the table there for you, as you can see, Ward 1 is 39 people over the maximum for Ward. So we will need to look at this and redistrict a little bit. On the second map, it's kind of a tentative, just an idea of kind of taking Ward 1 and moving some of that into Ward 2 to basically pretty much even everything out. Again, you want to kind of look at it as making it as permanent as possible, so we're not doing this every 10 years. But I encourage members of council to reach out to me with any ideas. If we want to come up with an ad hoc committee or something like that to redistrict us, we can definitely do something like that as well. My plan would be to have this reviewed and passed in a resolution at the next council meeting, which would be October, October 12th, which would give us plenty of time to get this map back to the county, which their deadline would be October 22nd. Once they receive all the plans from all the different municipalities, we move into phase three. Here the county is adopting final supervisory districts and the city sets aldermanic districts. We also need to pass an ordinance within 60 days of the wards being readjusted to set these aldermanic districts.
Any questions, Chris Sean? Anything else, Sean?
Nope, that is it.
Okay, written reports. All we have is building permits report this, this month. Do you have any questions? Police, fire, EMS reports were not provided because of lack of meetings, I guess. Okay, reports of committees, commissions and boards. We have engineer Jeanette.
Why, you noticed? All aboard the JPL Express. Right? Okay. So September is National Get Your Library Card Month. And I had access to some amazing railroad decorations. So if you stop into the library, we've got a train, a water tower, different things in there that are train related. So we want you to choo-choo-choose to use your library. And so the JPL Express, of course, you got to have a ticket to ride our train. And now you get a ticket to potentially win a Chippy's gift basket, $30 value. You go into Chippy's and say, I want that and that and that and that. Yeah, it's worth, it's, it's worth the effort. So what's the effort, you say? Fill out a bingo card. We have a kid's bingo card. We have an adult bingo card. Most of this, you already do. If you're a library user, you're checking out materials, you're, maybe you've downloaded the app to check out materials or to manage your account. There's lots of things. Maybe you haven't checked out a puzzle from the library yet. You can do that. And for every bingo, you get a ticket. And then of course, we have two of these gift baskets and we'll give those away at the end of September. So you have all September long, whoop, no freebies. I saw what you were doing. I saw what you were doing. So anyway, choo-choo-choose to use your library. And it's always easy, even a horse can do it. And we actually had a week ago today, a horse come into the library and get his own library card. If you don't follow us on Facebook, do, because the video's on there and it's actually gone viral, Mr. Mayor. 17,000 people have viewed this video because it's been shared on different horse racing platforms. This horse is a retired racehorse. And so, yeah, we're on the map. Okay, so I handed out before the meeting, the center field cinema information. That's this Friday. However, the weather is not looking great. So if rain is in the forecast around that, well, we'll make a call early in the day to see if it looks like rain. And.
Looking at 60% right now.
Yep, six zero, 60%. So market it, but also tell them to check the city's website or else the library's Facebook page to see if we do cancel it. We're showing Remember the Titans, which is a classic underdog, two glory movie and there's some racial segregation going on. I think this is a great movie for a great time in our world. The nice thing is, if we have to cancel, we have a year to reschedule. So Grattan Garage's Mini Warehousing is sponsoring this. And so if it doesn't happen Friday, it will. Mr. Schuster's bringing his couch. Yeah. It wasn't, our last movie was a great success. We saw Sandlot in the month of August and we look forward to carrying these on again in summer of 2022.
So you're going to make a new senator in good range?
We aren't going to, just because it's a new rec director that starts tomorrow and we thought that might be a lot to put on her plate. So we'll just postpone. Then last but not least, friends of Juneau Public Library, we have reopened our used bookstore. Our history room now is also a used bookstore and we are going with a donation based pricing. So you get to put the value of that book and decide, what am I willing to give the library for this awesome book or DVD? We even have a few leftover decorations that we just don't have space for. You need new Christmas ornaments? Check out the library. And one last thing, if you check by the outdoor, the LED sign, the message center, new landscaping was just put in on Sunday. We have 14 new shrubs that have been planted and in a couple of years, that will be vibrant display of color. So we're thankful that that entire project is now complete. Any questions? Get your bingo card. All right.
My wife says, my wife says you have problems with the sound. I know every word of every part in that movie, so.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. If we have problems with the sound. Is that how we should market it?
There you go.
Yeah. Period and bye.
Without vocal influence. Different people.
Yep. I can talk, Southern. Okay. Next we have reports of committees. We got that. Plan commission, David.
All right, we reviewed and discussed and did take some action regarding fencing of the property 207 West Street. It used to be the Pilsner Auto, Pilsner Garage. Diana Williams has owned it for 20 some years. And how it had to do with the tenants, she had there with a vehicle sitting outside and that is a moot point now. They have broke ties and he has purchased another property in town instead of purchasing hers. Review and discuss, take action on a new business opening with the drive through service lane. And they're going to sell barbecue out the window. Ryan Favorite is his name. He presented his plans for the business he would like to start. The committee reviewed the present ordinances regarding his smoker outside parking and signage. No issues were found in the burning section of our ordinances, which is 9.04.040. We found exception number one was, allows him to have that smoker, to do that business. Review and discuss, take action regarding implementation of property located 278 West Oak Street for obtaining his sales permit. We had asked him to put the 10-foot high fence around his property at the auto shop on the corner and he met that condition, so we allowed him to continue on with his paperwork so he can sell vehicles there. Those are meeting.
So the barbecue place is the old ice cream place?
Correct. Barbecue, yeah. I should have said that. It's the ice cream parlor. It used to be the ice cream parlor. He'll be selling it out of the north side.
When are they planning to open?
Soon.
So stay tuned.
It's not just barbecue. He plans on running a coffee shop out of there as well. He makes all his own breakfast.
Sandwiches?
Sandwiches, Danish donuts and what have you. He seems to be quite talented in the culinary.
He loves to do the barbecuing and you can ask him to barbecue you a kind of meat and that way, and he'll, you know, he said he'd do that for you.
Custom.
So there's costs for that, but he can have it done for you, what you want.
Plan commission's only concern is we do have an ordinance against outdoor wood burning, but the exception to the rule is there for cooking. You can burn, you can cook outdoors with, with wood and what have you, just can't eat your home food. But he seems like a very cordial individual. I recommend that he hook up with our local chamber commerce president, Brett Bowman from the Bowman Alley, which I found out over the weekend he did and whatever. So those two, I think, will be good mates as far as promoting Juneau and movers and shakers, I guess.
So it's just going to be a drive-through though, or is it going to inside? It'll be inside. That's going to slowly run into that.
Yeah, he has aspirations of.
Opening up?
Yeah, close, maybe including that canopy or whatever for seating and what have you. There's very limited seating. There's a lobby in there where you can walk in and pick up food as well. But maybe I'll put a couple of chairs and tables down, but it'll be pretty full fast.
He's a truck driver by trade, so it'll take a little bit to get this going.
So he knows about good food. Any questions for David? Seeing none, moving on, finance committee, Cheryl.
We did meet. We have a couple of issues that we're going to have to, or ordinances that we'll have in resolutions, excuse me, that we'll have in a couple of minutes. We talked about, we had a joint meeting with personnel, utility and the finance committee. We approved going ahead and filing, or filling the deputy clerk position, filing for that. We discussed a little bit about the health insurance plan, the coming 2022 health insurance plan and how it will affect our employees of the city. Sean is taking care of doing some further research with us for that, so we can continue moving forward with budgeting and choosing wisely what will work for everyone. Talked about the need for a commercial dishwasher, commercial freezer and a commercial water softener for the community center, all things that will benefit to help the place functioning well. And then we discussed the need for having monies present when things need to be replaced at the community center rather than all of a sudden these bigger expenses. And how can we take care of that and replace them funds, so we won't have a resolution for that as well shortly. We also talked about removing the curb and gutter on the west side of West Street. We're just taking care of. We talked about the preliminary budget. Right now it's looking pretty good. People are turning in information, working with Sean in regards to that. Sean gave us some preliminary information for our reading and pruse of and we will continue from there. And I believe that was it. So we have a resolution 43, 2021. Approved purchase of new commercial dishwasher, freezer and water softener for the community center. Whereas the public works and finance committee have both reviewed the need to purchase a new commercial dishwasher for the night bar, freezer for the kitchen and a water softener for the community center. Whereas the public works and finance committee recommend to approve the purchase of a commercial dishwasher at a cost not to exceed $3,900, as shown in exhibit A, using the general fund's budget. Whereas the public works and finance committee recommend to approve the purchase of a commercial freezer at a cost not to exceed $3,019, as shown in exhibit D, using the general fund's budget. Whereas the public works and finance committee recommend to approve the purchase of a water softener at a cost not to exceed $2,495, as shown in exhibit C, using the general fund budget. And we all therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this fourteenth day of September, 2021. With the passage of resolution 43, 2021. Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Booty. Any discussion, questions or comments?
How does money get put back into the general fund's budget? Is that a yearly thing? That's the taxes, so that's why you levy it. We'll be levying here in November, yeah. That's a yearly thing, yeah. So basically, there's some extra funds within the community center budget for this year. So we're just going to use those extra funds for the purchase of these two.
He's total of just shy of $10,000, Richard. And there was a prime example, there was like a $20,000 community center budget for striping the gym floor. Been digging in that a little bit here and there. Other things on these particular items, but yeah.
Okay.
When you overspend in one end, you just got to tighten the belt on the other.
Just shift it around.
Yeah, pretty much, pretty much.
Well, these purchases were because of the inspection.
Correct.
It was required.
You cannot have residential grade appliances. You can have them on site, but you got to have provided at least one commercial unit like this that you could actually freeze this stuff in, take it out and move it to the residential stuff. That's perfectly fine, but you can't have just residential grade stuff on site. You have to have one commercial freezer of this effect. And then the dishwasher was something that's been there for an extremely long time. It's the under bar refrigerator that does all the glassware inside the bar. And the water softener is also an aging unit that's had multiple leaks over the years and just is not functioning anymore. That's an important thing, especially with the, with the dishwashers you have there. And that's an important thing, especially with the, with the dishwashers you have there. They have a very tiny heat, heating coil that the water goes through that boosts it from the temperature of your water heater right at site of the dishwasher. And that has a very condensed coil that you wanna make sure you got soft water going in there because the alignment and scale can cause that, the plug-up and cause you all kinds of problems. So, there are all necessities and as long as we're gonna be around in a community center, we're forced to bite the bullet and keep up with the times, so.
John, you've set through the whole thing too. Do you wanna comment on why we bought the same brand?
Yeah, for warranty and you got the same guy coming and fixing. One breaks down, they're both the same model, same company, so it just made sense anyway.
We do pay yearly for stainless steel products. It's just the way it is. So, no other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Fudi.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Grant.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution forty-three, twenty twenty-one has passed.
Resolution forty-four, twenty twenty-one is because of this experience that we've had recently and knowing that there will be things in the future that we'll have to take care of. How do we handle it and be fully sharedly responsible? So, this one tries to help with that. Approve to place a portion of the monthly community center rent into an equipment replacement fund. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed the need to create an equipment replacement fund to be used for replacement of items at the community center. And whereas the Finance Committee recommends to approve placing five hundred dollars of the monthly community center rent into this equipment fund starting in twenty twenty-two, both funds being available for other needs also as directed by Common Council. Now, therefore be resolved that the Common Council of the City of June accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of June on the fourteenth day of September twenty twenty-one. I move for passage of Resolutions forty-four, twenty twenty-one.
Second? Motion by Brown, second by Grant. Further discussion? Very self-explanatory. I'm responsible for that number. I just kinda suggest that starting there, that's not locked in stone, that can be altered at any time and what have you. But at least we're kinda building a contingency fund for future, future issues. But other than maybe a dishwasher in the kitchen, I think we're in pretty good shape down there right now. No other questions or comment? Roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Grant.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fudi.
Aye.
Schuster. Aye.
Resolution forty-four, twenty twenty-one has passed. Anything else, Cheryl?
I do not have anything else.
Personnel. Take that one too, Cheryl, or?
Sure. Like I said, we talked about the Deputy Clerk needing to fill that position. We also met August thirty-first for Personnel prior to our September seventh joint meeting. Ashton Dahl has been put forward as the new Recreation Director from the Rec Committee. We, she was interviewed. There were four candidates, I think, that they looked at in total. And then, those two narrowed it down to Ashton was chosen. The goal is to have her start tomorrow. And there is a resolution in regards to that one here for us, and I will read that. Resolution forty-five, twenty twenty-one. Approve to hire Ashton Dahl Recreation Director. Whereas the Recreation Committee has advertised for and interviewed applicants for the position of Recreation Director for the City of June. Is this mine to read, Ashton?
It's from the Recreation.
I'm sorry, I got the wrong place though. I'll look it up, do that. But we had to approve then our Personnel Committee. I'm not gonna finish reading it because it's on the Recreation. This is Rec, this is Personnel.
Okay.
But she was approved through Personnel Committee to go ahead and hire her and rate as well as the time.
Probably why the resolutions weren't in order here.
We also, Sean brought to us the, another option for a different supplementary insurance that at this point in time, we're not getting into that even further. It's like Aflac, but we have Aflac here in the city, so we're gonna be happy with this.
Very good.
Nothing else?
Moving on, public safety. John?
We did not have a meeting. We have one resolution that was amended. Some wording change with the agreement through the Horacon for EMT. Mentioned paramedic, but they're not paramedics, they're only EMTs, so. I'll read that resolution. Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, amended nine fourteen of twenty twenty-one. Approve coverage agreement with City of Horacon EMS. Whereas the Public Safety Committee has reviewed an agreement between the City of Juno and the City of Horacon to provide EMT basic services when one of these two agencies is short on manpower. And whereas the Public Safety Committee recommends to approve the coverage agreement with Horacon as shown in Exhibit A, now therefore be resolved that the Common Council of the City of June accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of June on the fourteenth day of September twenty twenty-one. I move for passage of Resolution thirty-nine, twenty twenty-one.
Second? Motion by Schuster, second by Evans. Any further discussion? We talked about this last month, which is a matter of showing up each department's needs when they run short or when they're out on a second call or what have you. It's always, both communities always man a first team and the second teams are usually shored up with people that are just randomly available. I don't think they have any established roster in Horacon, just as we do in Juno, so. So, basically, it's just a way to cover each other's and help each other in the neighboring communities.
Yeah, pretty good. Juno helps Horacon, Horacon helps Juno, so.
Any other questions? Saying none, roll call vote, please.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Fudi.
Aye.
Grant. Aye.
Resolution thirty-nine, twenty twenty-one has passed. Anything else?
Nope, that's it, we did not have a meeting.
Public Works? Dave, can you find your way through?
Public Works, yeah. A commercial dishwasher that was, we talked about already, was discussed, the commercial freezer and a water softener. And it was sent to Finance to do the, decide on the aim. Then they also, we also discussed the curb and gutter on West, on the west side of West Street. The committee reluctantly approved the three hundred seventy-five feet of curb at twenty-one dollars and thirty cents a foot, plus the ADA ramps on the corner, plus an additional cost for three catch patients that needed to be renovated. So, that was also added on to our portion of the bill from West Street. Scott gave a report on projects and dumpster prices from other waste disposal companies, and ours are not living up to the agreement that we made. So, they're looking at different pricing because of the change of ownership over in Mayville. There were seventeen new Christmas decorations purchased for Highway twenty-six, West, and West Oak Grove Street. The older decorations will be used on Oak Street down in front of the businesses, and that'll be the new area for new Christmas decorations to be, to replace them. See that they are very old. That was the meeting.
I know I referred our Streets Superintendent to you in regards to issues that we're having with our waste hauler.
Yeah.
Do you wanna touch upon anything, if you discuss?
Sure, I talked to him and there's been some big problems. And I don't think they're really getting any better from that. I've heard, I've reached out to the provider a couple of times. They said they'd work on it. Have you seen any improvement?
Well, basically, the dumpsters that we have for people to haul bulk during a couple of times a month down at the yard there was not a part of the original contract. So, we've got two dumpsters that have been sitting down there going on a month that are full.
And they still haven't?
And haven't been picked up. I suggested Scott reach out to you and, well, tell you what, we're gonna charge them rent for storing those dumpsters.
You should, right. I would agree. I recommend you do that. Yeah, I reached out to them and they said they'd work through things and it sounds like they haven't done anything.
We talked about, well, before the meeting, our community didn't have near the problems with this outfit. This, a lot of the other communities, a lot of the other communities' contracts have come up and they've jumped ship to go to somebody else. And our problems were small compared to what I've been hearing. We have emails between us mayors, you know, and whatever, and discuss the issues. They are considerably less than the other competitors in the, in the field there. But our contract runs through twenty twenty-two. So, I guess if things get worse. But then again, this was not included in the, in the contract.
Right.
These were add-ons, that agreement that was struck between our, our Street Department and our Public Works Department and the hauler. But usually, like clockwork, when the dumpsters were, were full, within three days, they'd be emptied or picked up and new and set. But right now, we've got, these have been set for at least three weeks, I think, sitting down there right now.
I can call them one more time, but that's ridiculous.
Yeah. I guess if you have our blessing to threaten them with, hey, we're just gonna have to pay for storage of those dumpsters at the same rate that we're dumping those dumpsters for.
The other thing I usually recommend is, most of the towns and cities that I represent, every three or four years, they reap it out, their waste contracts and recycling contracts. Because if you don't do it that way, you find they start getting a little greedy and the prices go up and you end up with a bad arrangement, so. You should be doing that good.
What do we miss with a ten-year contract?
Oh, well.
That's a long time to be locked down.
It was bid out though at that time, I guess is what I'm saying. I didn't realize it was for that.
That's the longest I've heard of. Usually, they go three years and then they automatically renew. Occasionally, they try and get somebody locked into five years, but ten is extremely long.
That might explain why our rate is so low compared to the other ones that are offering rates.
Right, because a lot of.
Because ten years ago, costs were a lot less.
A lot of communities are jumping around in this.
Okay.
Yep.
Good to know.
So, those dumpsters are not under contract?
No.
Wouldn't we be able to go with somebody quicker?
Well, like I said, Scott now has GFL setting two new dumpsters in place of these. But these are just gonna be in the way until they pick them up and dump them. So, you know, there'll be four dumpsters down in the yard. If not now, they might even be there by now, I'm not sure. I haven't been down there, Jane, I can't tell you. Maybe there's.
So, should hypothetically be open before that actual date?
I'm hoping.
Okay. I'm just, yeah, a lot of people asking, like, I'm sure other people do here also, so it's good to know.
Well, I guess. Number one complaint. Yeah, I guess just for the benefit of the viewing public there, this is a, a real perk for the community to be able to go down there a couple of times a month and get away or dump your bulk items and what have you. Because most communities don't do it.
Right.
Do a once-a-year thing, like, we are having this Thursday, we're having curbside pickup of our bulk items. So, if you got something you wanna get rid of, make sure it's on the curb Wednesday night because I'm sure they'll be starting good and early in the morning. That's something we'll have to look at too, to see if, last couple of years, in my opinion, it hasn't been too well-used. Driving throughout town and it's a good chunk to change that we pay them every year to do that. It's underneath the blanket contract. But if that's something that people aren't gonna use, it's just money, then we'll have to save, hang, or save that and put it towards something else, so. But those of you viewing, bulk pickup is Thursday morning, so anything you have large, other than appliances and electronics, get them out by the curb. They should be loading them up, taken away.
So, they won't take any appliances or?
No.
No.
Tires. PCBs, fear of PCBs. I think the only appliance that would be safe for them to pick up is maybe a stove, a range of some type. There's no.
Anything where there's no chance of pre-owned or?
Right. Okay. Moving on, cable TV, Jane.
Cable TV, we did not have a meeting, but we do have one scheduled for Thursday, or Tuesday, September twenty-first. Looking at the budget and video server.
I see, we've received some votes for some of those, so. Some proposals, two proposals.
There's been two received.
All right, any questions for cable TV? Moving on, CDA, we did not have a meeting. Rec Committee. Resolution forty-five. Approve to hire Ashton Dahl Recreation Director. Whereas the Recreation Committee has advertised and interviewed applicants for the position of Recreation Director for the City of Juno. And whereas the Personnel Committee recommends that Ashton Dahl be hired at nineteen dollars per hour starting September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, with a six-month probation period with possible extension after six-month review and a possible fifty cent an hour raise with a satisfactory review. Now, therefore be resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juno accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juno this fourteenth day of September twenty twenty-one.
Move for passage of Resolution forty-five, twenty twenty-one.
Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? We had a subcommittee of the, of the Recreation Committee that interviewed four candidates. Three were, were selected for, for, well, all four were selected for interviews with the Complete Recreation Committee. And one dropped out prior, so three actually were, were, were interviewed by the Complete Recreation Committee and Ashton kind of went out. They were kinda split at work, at, at one time, between another gentleman and Ashton. And after a second meeting, they came the consensus that Ashton was the candidate that they wanted to hire. She's just recently married. She's living over by the Dells now. We're hoping she's gonna relocate to get closer to Juno to be able to effectively fill the position, so. Best we can do. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fudi.
Aye.
Grant. Aye.
Resolution forty-five, twenty twenty-one has passed. Moving on, Utility Commission?
We had a meeting last Wednesday. The minutes haven't been posted yet, so I'll just go over a couple of highlights and then I guess we have a resolution and an ordinance. Tom Umke continues working with Sensient on, on the new contract. I know you hear this every month, but he's still working on it. The Commission reviewed Baker Tilly sewer charge study with their suggested new rates and no action was taken. Nick reported on a transformer fault on August nineteenth that resulted in a power outage. I think mostly on Southern Perp Field.
South Street.
South Street.
Okay.
South Street. And that's, that's about it. Cheryl, you have anything?
I don't remember much else.
It was a short meeting, so.
It was.
Anyways, we have a resolution and an ordinance that are going to be addressing lateral replacements. So, Resolution number forty-six dash twenty twenty-one, City of Juno. Resolution authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistant Agreement. Whereas the City of Juno, the municipality, wishes to undertake a project to replace private-led service lines at residences, pre-K through twelve schools and licensed and/or certified daycare centers identified as DNR number four eight two four dash zero three. Grant the project. And whereas the municipality has applied to the Safe Drink, Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, grant the SDWLP for financial assistance in the form of a loan made by the SDWLP to the municipality, of which all the principal will be forgiven at the time that loan disbursements are made to the municipality pursuant to the DNR Financial Assistant Agreement. And whereas the SDWLP has determined that it can provide a loan with principal forgiveness in an amount up to seventy-five thousand dollars that it has identified as being eligible for SDWLP funding. Now, therefore be resolved, the city mayor and the city clerk are authorized by and on behalf of the municipality to execute the Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement that contains the terms and conditions of the SDWLP award for the project. The Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement is incorporated herein by this reference, passed by the Common Council of the City of Juno this fourteenth day of September twenty twenty-one. I move for passage of Resolution. I move for passage of Resolution forty-six dash twenty-twenty-one.
Second. Motion by Evans, second by Grant. Further discussion? Sean, is there a reason they have just limited to these, these private, I mean, wouldn't business fall underneath these same categories?
Not under this program, no.
No?
I'm, I'm sure they look at it as businesses that should be able to afford themselves.
Well, I was looking at the safety aspect of it, you know, if you've got a restaurant or a bar or whatever, serving, serving water through a lead line, I would think there'd be a hazard there, but okay. All right, still a question I got. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Evans.
Aye.
Grant.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution forty-six, twenty-twenty-one has passed.
Then we have ordinance two-sixty-four dash twenty-twenty-one. Bear with me, it's long. Ordinance to add, add the City of Juneau ordinance, Chapter thirteen, point zero-four, point zero-five-zero, lead water service line replacement to the Common Council of the City of Juneau. The Common Council of the City of Juneau ordains section thirteen, point zero-four, point zero-five-zero, lead water service line replacement. One, intent and purpose. The Common Council of the City finds that it is in the public interest to establish a comprehensive program for the removal and replacement of lead pipe water service lines in use within both the city utilities water systems and in private systems, and to that end declares the purposes of this section to be as follows. A, to ensure that the water quality at every tap of utility customers meets the water quality standards specified under the federal law. B, to reduce the lead in city drinking water to meet the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, standards, and ideally to, to a lead contaminant level of zero in city drinking water for the health of city residents. C, to eliminate the construction of water flow, flow caused by mineral-rich groundwater flowing through lead water service pipes and the consequent buildup of mineral deposits inside lead pipes. And D, to meet the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, WDNR requirements for local compliance with the lead and copper rule, C fifty-six CFR sixty-four sixty, forty CFR parts one forty-one point eighty to, through one forty-one point ninety, and Wisconsin Administration Code NR eight-oh-nine point five-four-one to eight-oh-nine point five-five. Two, identification of lead service lines. Upon notice from Juneau Utilities, any person or entity who owns, manages, or otherwise exercises control over a property connected to the Juneau Utilities water distribution system shall allow Juneau Utilities to inspect the customer-side service line to determine the material of construction as authorized pursuant to Wisconsin Statute one-nine-six point one-seven-one at sec. B, write-up entry. Upon presentation of credentials, representatives of the utility shall have the right to request entry at any reasonable time to examine any property served by a connection to the public water system of the utility for inspection of service line. If entry is refused, such representative shall obtain a special inspection warrant under Wisconsin Statute sixty-six point zero-one-one-nine. Upon request, the owner, less he or occupant of any property so served, shall furnish, furnish to the inspection agency any pertinent information regarding the piping system on such property. C, Juneau Utilities shall create and maintain a record of the location of all identified lead service lines in the City of Juneau. D, Juneau Utilities shall provide written notice to any person or entity who owns, manages, or otherwise exercises control over a property connected to the Juneau Utilities water distribution system that has been inspected and determined to be constructed of lead. Three, replacement of lead service lines. A, owner to replace lead service. The owner shall, at the owner's expense, replace the lead service. In all cases, the city shall supply an appropriate connection point as part of its work. The owner may elect to, one, contract with licensed contractor to complete the repair. All work needed to accomplish the repair shall be done at the expense of the owner. Within thirty days of giving notice of deficiency under subsection two A of this section, preparations for repair shall be provided to the utility water superintendent or his designee, and within thirty days of the giving of notice, the repairs shall be completed. Two, have the city contractors, if available, complete the repair. One, the city may, as part of any project, request unit bid prices for the calculation of the cost of making appropriate repair to the private building water laterals. Two, if available, and should the owner select this option, the ownership will be charged the entire cost of making the repair. The owner may elect to pay the entire amount upon completion of work, or the owner may request to be billed in annual installments plus interest as provided in section thirteen point zero-eight point zero-three zero, ren G of this code. B, water system reconstruction. One, inspection required. The utility water superintendent or his designee shall inspect all private connections to the public water mains at the time that the utility system is to be reconstructed. One, any existing private lead water lateral shall be considered illegal. Two, prior to the actual reconstruction of the water main and lateral system, each property owner shall be given written notice of the project. Such notice shall be made not less than thirty days prior to commencement of the actual work. Three, as the reconstruction progresses, the utility water superintendent or his designee shall inspect each private lead water lateral connection for the presence of lead, or in the event, in the event inspection had been made previously, determine the condition of the private water connection from inspection records. Four, in the event that the private water lateral does not contain lead, the city shall reconnect to the same utility system at an appropriate point near the right-of-way line. Five, in the event that the private water lateral is found to contain lead, the utility water superintendent or his designee shall immediately notify the owner in writing of the path. Two, pursuant to section thirteen point zero-four point zero-five zero, ren three, the owner shall, at the owner's expense, replace the lead service. In all cases, the city shall supply an appropriate connection point as part of its work. The owner may elect to, one, contract with licensed contractor to complete the repair. All work needed to accomplish the repair shall be done at the expense of the owner. Within thirty days of giving notice of deficiency under section ren two, ren A of this section, proof of arrangements for repair shall be, shall be provided to the utility water superintendent or his designee, and within thirty days of the giving of notice, the repairs shall be completed. Two, have the city contractors, if available, complete the repair. A, the city may, as part of any project, request unit bid prices for the calculation of the cost of making appropriate repair to the private building water laterals. B, if available, and should the owner select this option, the owner will be charged the entire cost of making the repair. The owner may elect to pay the entire amount upon completion of the work, or the owner may request to be billed in ten annual installments plus, or less, plus interest, as provided in section eight point zero-three, ren two A of this code. Four, authority to discontinue service. As an alternative to any other methods provided for obtaining compliance with the requirements of this code regarding replacement of illegal private water laterals, the utility may, no sooner than thirty days after giving of notice as provided in subsection ren two, ren A of this section, discontinue water service to such property served by illegal private water lateral after reasonable notice and an opportunity for hearing before the City Utility Commission under Wisconsin Statute, Chapter sixty-eight.
Any questions or comments?
I've reviewed any that makes sense to do it, to replace the lead.
And now, when this is made public, this is the first reading, how do we relate that? The funding for this, how do we, because everybody's going to think we're on stuff for the entire price of this thing, you know?
We are sending out letters between the clerk's office and utility office. We're sending out letters to those, A, which we don't, who we don't know if they have lead or not, so we can get and inspect them, and B, to those that we do know are, have lead laterals that this program is out there and available for them, so.
I mean, I agree that this we need to have in place to, to protect the, the welfare of the public, but I just wanted to know how it's going to co-mingle with the financing for it.
Right.
I can imagine people reading this in the paper and, well, no, I'm stuck with it. They told me there was going to be a program to pay for, what have you, so I can see the doom and gloom, you know, phone calls coming in.
And this program that we did approve in resolution, in the previous resolution that is just for this year, we do have to reapply and see if there's funds available for next year, so.
All right. Any other questions? This is an ordinance, so it'll have to be read the second time, and hopefully, wait at the reading the second time.
Yeah, wait at the reading the second time.
But we just might make it through.
You could ask the friend.
Maybe I'll tape it beforehand and just turn on the favor. There you go. Anything else from Utility Commission from either one of you today? Moving on, old business? Need old business tonight? A new business. Approved provisional licenses for forty-five days for Jessica Marks. Approved regular bartender's license for twenty-twenty-one, expired June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two for Tamara M. Sorento, Calista A. Chica, Jessica E. Marks, and Cedar R. Mascara, and Evan A. Owens. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve of provisional and a regular license?
Motion by Fuddy, second by Schuster. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry. No other business, as me and this are German.
We need more.
Motion to that effect. Motion by Brown. Second by these three. Second by Grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry.